Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located outside on the table and also on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator on the back wall of the legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, I'm going to go into the Board of Commissioners first and do the recognitions and proclamations. So roll call for opening the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. We'll go to recognition and proclamations. The first is a resolution recognizing the 17 poll workers who will be inducted into the Douglas County Election Commission's Poll Worker Hall of Fame for serving a minimum of 20 years. So I would ask all those in attendance to please come to the podium for the presentation. And I will read our resolution. Whereas poll workers are crucial to a healthy democracy and the integrity of the voting process in Douglas County. And whereas Douglas County mobilizes approximately 2,000 poll workers for each countywide election, some of their many duties include working at poll places, answering questions of voters, and counting ballots. And whereas Douglas County Election Commissioner Brian Cruz will host a Poll Worker Hall of Fame induction ceremony at the Election Commission office at 12220 West Center Road on Wednesday, August 23 at 3:00 PM to honor 17 poll workers who have dedicated a minimum of 20 years in helping ensure fair and honest democratic elections in Douglas County. And whereas Cruz will present the poll workers with a certificate of recognition, Nebraska Secretary of State Bob Evnan and Douglas County Board of Commissioners Chairwoman Marion Borgeson will share brief remarks and a reception will follow. And whereas here are the inductees listed with number of years of service who will be honored. Larry D. Aheart, 33. Sherri Bowens, 22. Walter Burres, 22. Carol Burwell, 22. Deborah Clay, 24. Randall Eastman, 27. Josephine Estrada, 22. Janice Fulmer, 22. Erin Johnson, 22. Dana Jones Gray, 29. Howard E. Cosell, 22. Lila Marchini, 22. Monty McLean, 31. Lloyd Levine, 21. Luann Roseau, 22. Stanley Standifer, 31. And Lawrence Zika, 22. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby recognizes the 17 poll workers who will be inducted into the Douglas County Election Commission's Poll Worker Hall of Fame for their incredible commitment and service to Douglas County dated this 22nd day of August 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, please vote.
Oh.
Ma'am, Commissioner Boyle made the motion. Who made the second?
Commissioner Rogers.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's the wrong.
Oh, I do.
Well, that's okay.
Let me all, I'm going to cancel.
Go ahead.
Well, good morning, Board of Commissioners, and thanks for having us. I'd like to introduce Chris Carruthers, my chief deputy, who I think most of you know. He's the balance. We balance each other out at the office, Republican, a Democrat, but obviously we're nonpartisan and pride ourselves in conducting ourselves in nonpartisan and doing the work in nonpartisanship for the voters and the citizens of Douglas County. So thanks, Chris. So we are here to honor poll workers that have at least 20 years of service. Tomorrow, as Chair Mary answered, we will be having our Poll Worker Hall of Fame at the Election Commission for 17 of those individuals. Poll workers in this county, in this state, in this nation have answered the call to serve through wars, scheduled elections, special elections, recall elections, and even the pandemic, as we saw in 2020, where we had polling places open in both the primary and the general election during the pandemic. In the Presidential General, that's our largest election we conduct, it will take about 2,800 poll workers, counting wide, doing a variety of jobs. The vast majority of those are at our 231 polling places, physical buildings around the county, but there are other jobs at the office, as the chair said, counting ballots, opening ballots, just all kinds of jobs, getting ready for the election and then helping after the election with the audit and such. So at this time, I would like to introduce one of the team members from our office. It's Brandon, and he oversees the thousands of poll workers for the election office. So Brandon is now a full-time employee overseeing poll workers, including recruitment, retention, training, paying them, and as you can well imagine, questions galore. Brandon first answered our call for volunteers in the pandemic of 2020. We asked for younger folks to help with that election. Brandon volunteered. He worked the 2020 and the 2021 elections. Then we had an opening for our board coordinator, who's in charge of poll workers. He applied in early 2022. We hired him in February of 2022, and so now he's a permanent member of our staff, and we couldn't be more thrilled. And it's great to have somebody who's done the job in the field because, you know, they know what it's like for those long days. So thank you very much, Brandon. One of the honorees is Dana Jones Gray. She's been with us 29 years. She started in the 1994 governor's race. So for those of you who remember, that was Ben Nelson versus Gene Spence back in 94. Exactly. And I'm going to have her come up and kind of let her say a few words and tell her story as to why she's a poll worker and why she continues to be. So thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I started off, I went to the military right after high school and full-time to the Army and decided that the full-time Army probably wasn't for me, so I went into the reserves after that. But in thinking about that, I kind of felt like I let the country down just a little bit because I was now reserves and not full-time, so what else could I do? I got a letter in the mail saying I had to do election duty or I'd get in trouble. And so I did it the first time, the first three times, and then kind of just forgot that all you have to do is three. So continued to just keep coming back, coming back, coming back, and then I realized that I could choose where I wanted to go. So I started to choose in my neighborhood because I hadn't seen some of my friends and some of the other people because I'd been gone to the military. And that was just fun because I just got to see everybody and see my friends and see their parents and see people. But as time went on, people started looking different. They weren't the same people. They moved or died, or I don't know what happened to them. So I decided to go to the neighborhood where I just retired from Omaha Public Schools and went to the neighborhood where my school is so I could see the parents and I could see some of the kids and some of the other people in the neighborhood. Poll working is, it's fun. We have a good time. I've never been with a group of people who we haven't enjoyed ourselves. It can be a long day, but it actually goes pretty fast. I've learned a lot of the jobs there. We switch off, we do different things. I've been the election, ahead of it before as well. It's kind of interesting that we still have the old booths. I know how to kick those and get the light to come on. I know how to set those up, and so it's really good. And I also am really diligent about getting people to volunteer. When they say, "Thank you for doing this," I tell them, "You can do this too. Would you like to sign this sheet?" So I try to get people to do the same as what I've done. I don't plan on stopping. I enjoy it. I even enjoy going, when we had to go, to the night run with the other person. Now you don't have to. I would always volunteer for that. And I guess the fun part, the funniest part is first I got the letter in the mail that it's 29 years. It does not seem like 29 years. Second, I didn't know there was an induction, so this is an honor. And third, I just remember that, I think it was the first or the second poll, I wanted to get a George Washington wig because in the book it said you had to say, "Hear ye, hear ye, the polls are now open." And I was that girl. And so I just remember that, too. So it's been a long time and an honor to be a part of a lot of very, very important elections. So thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Obviously, we are thrilled to have her, and we wish you many more years of happy service with us. So thank you. So I would like to thank each and every one of our poll workers. It truly would not be possible without them, as you can see. Tomorrow also happens to be National Poll Worker Recruitment Day across the nation. So we are always looking for poll workers, and it is a great way to serve the community and learn more about the election process. If individuals are interested or have questions about being a poll worker, the easiest way is to go to our website here, vottdouglascounty.com. Right across the top, just click on this "Election Worker." There's general information, training resources, and then at the bottom is the new "Election Worker." And you just click on that, and there's a form there that you just answer some questions and fill some things out. If you do have questions about this or you're unable to access the internet for some reason, you can always call our office at 444-VOTE and ask for Brandon. He'll be happy to help you and make accommodations for that. So we welcome poll workers of all ages to assist us. One of our longest-serving poll workers, if not the longest, which we believe, started in 1960 with President Kennedy, and he says he has never missed an election, not even during the pandemic. Last year, in 2022, we had an 88-year-old that volunteered for the first time, and undoubtedly we'll have 18-year-olds next year that will serve for many years to come. So as you can see, poll workers of all ages are truly the backbone of our democracy, and we thank them immensely for their service and continued service, and we look forward to our induction ceremony tomorrow. And I know Chair Mary Ann's coming, Commissioner Garcia's coming, and if you're able, all of you are welcome to come out to the office. So thank you. We appreciate it this morning. 3:00 PM, 3:00 PM at our office, 120th and West Center Road. So the ceremony will begin at 3:00, and then there's some light refreshments afterwards. And as Chair Mary Ann mentioned, Secretary of State Evnan will be there to help with this as well.
Very good.
Yep. If we could, Commissioner Rogers, Kavanaugh, and Morgan, if you could vote, and then the mics will start working for everybody.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Motion passes 7-0.
Brian, Chris, Dana, and Brandon, thank you for your invaluable service. I've often said, and I mentioned it to you earlier, that your service is the air supply of our democracy, and the safe, secure, honest, and accurate elections that you provide are really a service that we all enjoy. I don't know if we could have a functioning republic without your services. So thank you, and I'm looking forward to a robust discussion relative to our election policy coming forward because it's been challenged around the country, fortunately not here. But I think that it will allow us to examine how really good our election services are, and you're a shining example of that. I shared with you that I've been involved with probably more recounts than any other living lawyer in Nebraska. And all over the state, I'm always impressed by the honesty and integrity and accuracy of our election process. Despite our political differences, and your office represents that, Brian and Chris, coming from different parties, it doesn't play a part in our election process. You provide a really nonpartisan, honest, effective, and transparent service that we all enjoy. So thank you, and I really, 29 years, that's an amazing, amazing record. Keep it up. Thanks a lot.
No other lights. I do look forward to the event. I think this is just an absolute wonderful show of our gratitude and appreciation for the work that they do, and so I look forward to seeing you all. If you could just come through the line, we'll shake hands, and I'll hand you one of the resolutions.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you, and thank you to the Board for all of your support. My staff and I truly do appreciate it, so thank you.
Yeah, we should be able to. Okay, I'm going to do a couple here. Here we go. Okay, one, two, three. And then let's stay there. Okay, one, two. Okay, thank you. Yep, go ahead. Go ahead, Larry.
Larry Stewart, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm not here to rebut the resolution. I am in favor of the revolution, resolution, in honoring their years of service. However, I do want to make some comments about the wording of the revolution, resolution, excuse me, and some points about election integrity, et cetera. First of all, we are not a healthy democracy. Would you please change that word to "republic"? And talking about the many duties of election workers and poll workers. You know, they're like any other employee. You either do it the way you're told to do it. In Nebraska, your employer can fire you for just about anything, and I've been fired a few times. What I would like these election workers to think about as they're being honored is all of these years when you followed orders, think back as to whether all of your orders were on a totally QT. And in 20-some years, has there not been some irregularity in any of the election precincts? We all know Omaha has a history of some rather dirty politics, and we all know from history that the precinct levels in Chicago and across the nation are controlled by factions. The founding fathers warned us about factions. Factions today are the Republican Party, or Democratic Party, or the Independent Party, or the liberals, the progressives. And sometimes they control with their tax-free dollars because they're a 501(c)(3) what we say and what we do. So I ask these people that are being honored, now I'm 81 years old and I've been voting since age 18, so I probably have more seniority in the election process than they do. And as a citizen, we rank higher than people hired by you and instructed by you, I'm sorry, by Brian. Brian is appointed. We didn't have a chance to elect or unelect Brian. Now, in his defense, he also was kind of told what to do and how to do it. It appears to be down from the Secretary of State, and the Secretary of State will be part of the honoring process tomorrow. I do object to that because he denies and has been denying requests for public information documents in regards to the election. And he himself is not really transparent about what has gone on, and because of that, we have an awful lot of people that are challenging it. They're going county to county. I'm not the only one that's been here. So far, I'm about the only one that spoke about it, but I won't be the last. I have also requested to be put on the agenda as a presenter like they were so that we, the people, can have a say about the elections and what you should be doing instead of whitewashing everything that we're trying to do, bring integrity back into that system. Thank you.
Kenneth Anderson, and I as well appreciate the efforts of the poll workers that were honored. I agree with honoring them, and I speak to the issue of a lot of suspicion about elections. And this is not just since 2020, by the way. Mathematical analysis shows that, indicates that rampant election fraud has taken place in every single county in the United States, organized. In other words, it's way above poll workers, and it's way above a single county. It's way above Douglas County Election Commissioner. And in response to that, I've written a postcard design here. I've already given a copy to Valerie at the Election Commissioner. This is what she received. Dear election officials, per state Supreme Court rulings, et cetera, an enforceable implied in fact contract arises between parties who signify agreement through an action, as in a voter surrendering a completed ballot according to instructions of election officials. Implied warranties and implied duties always accompany implied in fact contracts. This notice to you, by me, the undersigned voter, reminds you of said contract and the accompanying implied warranties and duties that are binding by law upon you. By no means is this notice intended to educate you about centuries' strong precedent, so if said subject is unfamiliar to you, you seriously need to consult your legal counsel lest you risk being derelict in your due diligence. This notice reminds you that among a number of other responsibilities said contract binds you to, you are legally bound to implied warranty and implied duty. Merely one of many aspects of the warranty is that you most accurately and honestly count and report all legitimate ballot selections while preventing dilutions by counting illegitimate votes. Vote totals in many recent elections have been in excess of the expected numbers of votes allowed, and I will no longer tolerate such breach of implied contract if it continues. Along with this is the implied duty to consider the most verifiable cast ballot by me to be the one and only authoritative ballot cast by me. I will not tolerate that my in-person ballot surrendered to you when I've presented irrefutable proof of my identity is destined for the category of provisional because an unknown person previously submitted a ballot in my name. This implied duty demands that you consider ballots surrendered to you in my name but without ID to be more provisional than my just-in-time ballots when I show valid ID. Another of many implied duties incumbent upon you is that you reveal relevant information to me, including the fact, if true, that my ballot selections are converted into unsupervisable electronic signals prior to them being counted, and that those unsupervisable electronic signals are the most authoritative basis by which race results get reported. If any relevant facts are not acceptable to me, then I will be entering said contract under duress. As you can manifestly understand, the unsupervisable possession in modifiable format of my ballot selections prior to counting by an entity whom I've not vetted for their character, motives, objectivity, et cetera, would certainly be unacceptable to me. Signed. And this original may be found on my webpage at esssteelshour.vote. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I always enjoy the presentation that Mr. Cruz brings forward to the Board because he is well-spoken and he can provide details on the spot on what has transpired or what should transpire, what can transpire. Brings history and a positive outlook to the elections, which is based on fact. I want to comment, though, on the, oh, and the poll workers, though, you know, they're the ones that allow him to do that, to bring that message here. Having said that, I just want to comment, since the world is watching Douglas County, that the, this story that the elections in 2020 were fraudulent and they may continue to be fraudulent is a tactical strategy by the losers that, that they need a good amount of people to believe in order for them to push their agenda because it, the people that support Donald Trump are the ones that are most likely to say that the elections in 2020 were fraudulent because, you know, they, they feel that they're the ones to lead this country, but the outcome... the outcome in 2020 and 2016 show that it wa, it was a close, um, it's a close outcome. Donald Trump won in 2016, uh, and that was close. And he lost in, in 2020, and that was close as well, because he's a liar and he's a, uh, Donald Trump's a liar. He, uh, is not a very good, uh, leader, doesn't show qualities of leadership. And he, he's advantageous. He's a person who takes advantage of the situation to move forward. And the, the outcomes of the elections in 2016 and 2020 show that, that he could only move forward on party line. The primaries were for him, and then in the general elections, it was ve, very tight. He can't bring the country together. And since he's not, he doesn't have leadership skills, um, what he has left is to dismantle the very thing that allowed him the win, which was the elections. So I, you know, I, that's what I think, and, uh, uh, his lawyers and Trump's hasn't, he hasn't been able to bring facts to court to demonstrate there was irregularities in the 2020 elections. So, uh, based off of that, I, I think we can be confident that, uh, throughout the nation, we're, we're still an exceptional country, especially when it comes to elections, because up to today, he can't prove, Donald Trump and his minions cannot prove that there were irregularities in the 2020 elections, the general election.
One minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, um, I'm going to wrap back around, that the reason we were here is to honor those individuals who have served Douglas County through the election process for twenty-plus years. And we could not be more proud of the individuals and appreciative of the individuals, and we look forward to honoring them tomorrow. With that, um, I think we have one employee who will be here to be recognized, a, um, Ms. Melinda Rush. Oh, there you are. Why don't you come on down, yep, come on down. So we're recognizing, uh, Melinda Rush, who's worked at the Douglas County Youth Center for twenty-three years. And Mark is here to say a few words on her behalf, and then we will hear from Melinda.
Yeah, well, and you would actually hear from Brad as well, he had to step out to receive a phone call. It, it is so.
Mark, sorry, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, Mark LaFleur, uh, Manager of Administrative Services, Douglas County Youth Center. It, it's such a pleasure to get to this point where we can recognize someone who's had such a tremendous impact on our young people at the youth center. Ms. Rush has been with us for over twenty years, twenty-three years, and the, the best, thank you, uh, the best thing that we can say is how well the young people have responded to her, and how well they have been able to follow direction, and, and how well they speak of her. And, and that says a lot, because she was always on a unit with youth with the most challenges, and, uh, some of those challenges really took a lot of patience and understanding to work through. And when the children found out that she was leaving, they were really sad. And you can tell, over the years, the number of folks who come back to say thank you, well, Ms. Rush has had dozens of those individuals that have come back. We're really fortunate to have had her as a juvenile detention specialist here at the youth center, and we're really sad to be losing her at this time. But we're, we're really just grateful and thankful for an opportunity to recognize her efforts and how much she made an impact on the young people here at the youth center. So with that, I'd like to, I, I'm sure Brad is in root. We'll give you a chance to say a couple of things.
Yep, do we, let me get a motion to approve the resolution. Okay, go ahead, Melinda.
First of all, I would like to say good morning.
Good morning.
My years of service at the youth center have been very, um, very inspiring, and I would have to say that the youth that I've worked with over the years have taught me a lot. They've taught me a lot, and I have taught them a lot as well. I really appreciate the opportunity that the county has provided for me. I learned a lot from them, I learned a lot from the staff and administration as well. And I would like to thank them for, for everything they have given me and the opportunity as well. And I'll hand it over to Brad.
Sorry, I left the room at the wrong time, I apologize. Melinda, thank you so much, twenty-three years?
Yes.
Yeah, and, uh, we were just talking, and we had a little celebration for her yesterday. And, uh, she spoke, and she teared up a little bit.
A lot.
And I was so proud of her, because, uh, just the emotion came through and.
You're trying to make me cry now.
It was so clear just how much, uh, the kids mean to her. That's exactly what we want out of the people working with our kids over at the youth center. You're, you're a wonderful example of that. And we're gonna miss you a lot, and, uh, her impact, like so many others at the youth center, is gonna be generational. So you definitely have that to remember, and, uh, you're welcome back anytime.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board, Melinda, we thank you for your service and dedication, and just hearing your words of what you received back, um, is heartwarming. But we wish you the best in your retirement, enjoy it, um, get your honeydew list for somebody all made up, and sit back and relax.
I plan on doing just that.
Okay, all right. PJ, Commissioner Morgan?
Like PJ, then. Melinda, and I haven't said this before, but your expression, I don't know what you're gonna be doing, it's none of our business to know, but you just have a certain manner that just makes people feel good, and I just want you to know, it's really fun to watch you and your smile and just, it's great. And I know the staff out there does a great job, and I'm certain you're gonna really, really be missed, and the young people, unfortunately, that do need, uh, be at our youth center, will miss someone like you being there. So thank you for the great twenty-three years.
Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, let me get this straight, how can you retire at the age of twenty-nine? What, what am I, what am I missing? I look in the mirror, I'm, thanks for your service.
All right, with that, please vote, and then we'll come around and get a picture with you.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Can I use your phone? Technical difficulties. Yep, okay. Here we go, one, two, three. I'll take one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Is this the fam?
And our last presentation recognition is for Amanda Nannan, who worked at the Douglas County Community Health Center for twenty-three years. Unfortunately, she can't be with us today, but again, we do wish her the best on her retirement and thank her for her dedication to Douglas County. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, are you voting yes on this resolution?
Please, not here, sir.
All right, motion passes six to zero, Commissioner Kavanaugh. All right, motion passes seven to zero.
So could we reset, a motion to recess out of Board of Commissioners and enter into the Douglas County Board of Equalization, please? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan, please vote.
Mr. Kavanaugh. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, we will move to the Board of Equalization, uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, and item B, call for a meeting is set Tuesday, August 29th, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rules or increased value on property. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Uh, citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda?
Do I turn some? Mm-hmm, thank you. Alan Seibert, 5537 North 140th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. A short time ago, I commented about the Omaha Transit Authority's recent levy increase from four-point-seven to six-point-seven percent. I did some research into the OTA's budget and their budget history. The top section of the exhibit shows there was significant increase in OTA's budget recently. However, the next section down shows only a modest increase in the taxable value provided by the DC Assessor last year. So where are the extra funds supposed to come from? The section to the right shows there was an increase in the property tax requirement. In other words, the levy was increased. The last section shows OTA's levy history. You can see that from 2016 slash seventeen to 2021 slash twenty-two, the levy went down nine-and-a-half percent, then increased forty-two-and-a-half percent. I wondered who's responsible for oversight. In OTA budget meeting minutes, I found a few things. A report of joint public agency and inter-local agreements for the period from July 1st, 2021 to June 30, 2022, said that OTA and the City of Omaha resolved to create the Omaha Streetcar Authority. And Resolution 420 dated four-twenty, excuse me, eight-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, said that the Omaha City Council and the Douglas County Board of Commissioners are the levy authorities for the transit authority of the City of Omaha. Then I remembered State Senator Hanson got his Property Tax Request Act passed, also known as the Postcard Act, that required a joint public hearing in September if a taxing authority increased their levy more than two percent. The taxing authorities that are supposed to comply are county, city, village, school district, learning community, SID, NRD, ESU, or community college, but not Omaha Transit Authority. Why? State Senator Justin Wayne got the Regional Metropolitan Transit Authority Act passed in 2019. That law changed OTA to Regional Metro Transit Authority and allows the RMTA to increase its levy to ten cents per hundred dollars. From the current six-point-seven-four-three to ten is another forty-eight-point-three percent. Again, why? After I brought this up, I was at the, one of the previous BOE meetings, I was told it was to fund a new bus route from North Omaha to Fremont for the new Costco chicken plant. I thought that was a great idea, that that should help North O's economy. The plant opened in 2019 and was supposed to employ eight-hundred Nebraskans, according to local media at the time. By September 2020, employment expanded from six-hundred to eleven-hundred. There is no bus route to Fremont on RMTA's website, but we have, we now have an Omaha Streetcar Authority within the Regional Metro Transit, who does not have to comply with a two-percent levy limit, while sitting on what looks like a five-million-dollar cash dollar, excuse me, a five-million-dollar cash reserve, which is sixteen percent of their property tax requirement.
One minute.
Thank you. One more thing about the Postcard Act. Seventy-seven dash sixteen thirty-three, three B, second sentence. The presence of a quorum or the participation of elected officials at the joint public hearing does not constitute a meeting as defined by Section eighty-four dash fourteen-oh-nine of the Open Meetings Act. I think all members of this board and the city council should attend that joint public meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak about an item for Board of Equalization that is not on the agenda?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. Thank you, sir. Along the straight lines, just a coincidence, but this morning on KFAB, there was a discussion about the Streetcar Authority and citizens being told that they will not have any input into this, we've already been told that. And that's part of the problem here in Omaha, River City, they call it, that there's a lot of unelected boards and appointed people and committees, subcommittees, that don't have to share the information, or don't have to let us participate. And, uh, the Omaha World Herald just recently also had an article about the money for ARPA giveaways is disappearing, and programs like that, but also children's mental health or a Head Start are going to go away because you won't be able to give them any more money. I think I've mentioned that before. You can't run a government, whether it's, uh, what was on the screen with City Transit, who, by the way, the, the taxing comes in there too, that, uh, the city tax on restaurants and everything goes up, so we pay more there, but we also pay through TIF financing for the projects to build the infrastructure to have a trolley. So there's many different. So there's many different ways that we're paying for this. And then the city and the county like to say, oh, well, we reduced our levy. We catch your taxes, but the overall taxes are going sky high. Plain line, other people, don't take responsibility for it yourselves. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak about an item not on the Board of Equalization's Seeing none, we do have a couple resolutions. Resolutions D through G, please note, item D has been just moved to the, under the Finance Committee, so Resolutions E, F, and G. Is there a motion to approve the resolutions? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We have two protests. The first is an appeal of rejection of homestead exemption for Margyn Swilly of 4009 Ohio Street, Omaha 68111. Good morning, Mr. Goodwilly.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. The Swilly protest, that's a situation where the gentleman sent us an income statement, but he never has sent us the actual application. When someone applies for homestead, there's an application and it comes along with an income statement. We have reached out, we reached out with phone calls to Mr. Swilly a couple of times and got no answers. From the protest, it appears that he has some medical challenges. They had him in the hospital. And so what I think the right resolution is here, some years ago, the legislature passed a statute that enabled people to file late for homestead if they got a certificate from their doctor saying that they were impeded from filing on a timely basis due to some kind of a medical condition. And that's what it sounds like is going on here. I was kind of hoping somebody would show up on behalf of Mr. Swilly today because I've put together the necessary paperwork that they would need to fill out prior to June 30 of next year to still qualify for homestead this year. So I think the resolution here is, is I think the protest can be dismissed, but we will get this person who filed the protest on behalf of Mr. Swilly, we will get that person the paperwork and they have until the 30th of June to file it. So this is one of these deals where when we don't get filings, we try and reach out, either on the phone or with a letter. If we don't get any response, we don't know what could have happened. The person could have moved into a nursing home, could have moved out of state. I mean, who knows? And in this instance, it sounds like Mr. Swilly was in the hospital, so that'll kick on the late filing provisions. So I think for today, the protest can be dismissed, then he's got till the 30th of June next year to file.
All right. Is there a motion to dismiss item H? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
One moment, please, Commissioners. Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next appeal is an appeal of a rejection of homestead exemption for Ermgard Vascoenas?
Yeah, I think it's Vascoenas, but I would hazard to guess. This too is a late filing. In this circumstance, the application was filed, the page that has the application on it was filed on time, but it was not accompanied by the income statement. We sent out several letters seeking to get Ms. Vascoenas to file the income statement as well. We got no response. Eventually, a relative filed it, but after the filing deadline. As I look at the application, I don't see anything that alleges a significant health problem for Ms. Vascoenas, except that she does have a predilection for throwing away incoming mail. So, so I'm not sure what we do with this one. I don't know that the June 30th window is available to her, but yes, it's simply a late filed application. I think she probably would qualify otherwise, at least based on income and the value of her home.
So she hasn't been on homestead exemption before?
She has.
Oh, she has been on it before?
Yes.
I would be more apt to grant it if she's been on it before. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
We don't have need, thanks, Mike. We don't have need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn out of Board of Equalization and enter into Board of Corrections? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Friend is here, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve? There's motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Citizen comments. Is there anyone in the chamber or on Zoom wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report by the Director of Corrections. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you our report for the month of July. Following, enclosure number one, administrative services. Following the first month of the fiscal year, we were our $142,048 under budget. There was $358,860 spent on overtime in July. That is a decrease of about $30,000 from the previous month. And nearly $800,000 in bond payments were processed by our records department. Turning to enclosure number two, community corrections and reentry services. The sanctioned center and transitional discharge center placed a total of 24 individuals in community corrections and saved a combined 105 bed days. Work release admitted 30 individuals and house arrest admitted 54. The reentry assistance program, or RAP, admitted 21 individuals. 60 individuals in the jail were admitted to the therapeutic community housing units. In pretrial services, we are still working towards full integration of data systems, but I can tell you that there were 226 individuals placed on pretrial release. 1,058 individuals were supervised over the course of the month on pretrial release. 461 individuals participated in the 27, 24/7 sobriety program. There were 160 individuals who were monitored via, or supervised via GPS monitors, theoretically saving 3,674 bed days. And I want to make another note, in your enclosure, you will see that Justine Wall, who's present today, has made some changes to our reports to make them a little more comprehensive regards to our reentry data, so I encourage you to look through that enclosure to see the new data elements that have been included. And Justine is here for any questions if you have them. Enclosure number three, compliance. We are preparing for our American Correctional Association audit. That audit for the jail and community corrections has a total of 634 standards that we will demonstrate compliance with. The audit will be scheduled for October 30th through November 3rd. And our accreditation hearing, actually hearings for both facilities, will take place at the American Correctional Association Winter Conference in Washington, DC in January. Enclosure number four, personnel. Eight officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in July, including the retirement of Officer Roland Peters. So congratulations to Roland on a exemplary career and service to Douglas County. 16 officers began the training academy on July 24th and will graduate on September 1st. And as of July 31st, we were 100% staffed. Molly Thomas, now a community corrections officer, celebrated 20 years of service to the Department of Corrections, and Michelle Chamberlain was promoted to the role of Lead Payroll Assistant. Turning to enclosure number five, population. There were 1,298 admissions. That's an increase of 30 from the previous month. There were 1,266 releases. Our high count was 1,129 and our low count was 1,065. The average daily population was 1,090. That was a decrease of 13 from the previous month. There were 85 custodial sanctioned bed days, an increase. The US Marshal population decreased. The felony pretrial population increased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased slightly. Probation violations remain stable. 19% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24, up slightly from the previous month. 67% of our population were minorities, up 2% from the previous month. 13% of our population were female and 18% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Turning to enclosure number six, medical. There were 1,105 intake screenings and there were 379 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 20 times for emergent medical care. Nine of those were by 911. There were five hospital admissions, which resulted in a combined total of 38 days of hospitalization. And there were 66 off-site specialty medical appointments. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 194 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 412 initial mental health assessments. There were 86 mental health infirmary placements, primarily suicide precautions. 181 individuals were placed on alcohol or drug withdrawal protocols. Referrals to community-based mental health services, there were seven Board of Mental Health referrals and four long-term psychiatric transfers to Lincoln Regional Center. And in this month, there was 43% of our population was diagnosed with a mental illness. Enclosure number eight, our security operations and honor guard. Our crisis negotiation team was deployed four times, all of which were successful. One involved compliance with taking a psychiatric medication injection. Two involved safely having individuals attend court. And one involved attendance of a medical examination. Our CERT team, emergency, CERT emergency response team, there was a deployment for a cell extraction for an individual needing emergency medical care, and the team also trained on using our RAP restraint and transport system. There were 13 housing unit searches conducted. Contraband recovered included items modified for tattooing, modified items to create a spark, and suspected K2, which was submitted for testing. And our honor guard, two honor guard members provided services as part of the Metropolitan Honor Guard at a funeral for a local law enforcement officer. Enclosure number nine, staff development, wellness, and retention. 10 individuals, or excuse, 10 individuals interviewed for correctional officer positions, and there were 59 applications that were received. 16 officers began their academy training. Recertification for PPCT, which is our, stands for pressure point control task tactics or defensive tactics, continued for all correctional officers throughout July. Orientation videos, which are a requirement for our American Correctional Association accreditation, were filmed, and we expect the final edited versions, which I'll share with the board in the coming weeks. 10 staff members utilized the wellness and retention office for assistance for the first time, and an additional 18 staff members received ongoing services. 17 staff members utilized the peer support team. Three staff members were referred to external mental health resources. Yoga for first responder classes were offered weekly, and utilization of our peer support app increased from the previous month. Other noteworthy items, work on our safety-wide, our facility-wide safety project continues. When concluded, all housing units with a top tier will have safety netting installed and top bunks are being replaced. Two, two other units have now been closed for, for these renovations, and this project will continue throughout much of the balance of 2023. And also in July, our lobby reopened to public visitation and utilization increased throughout the month. With that, I am ready for your questions.
I see no lights. I just have two things. On page one, when you talk about the saved combined day, combined bed days for those two programs, in the graphs, could you put the, equate that to dollar savings?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, no other lights. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
No need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn and reconvene as Commissioners?
Commissioners, yeah.
Okay. And I apologize, while I was thinking that, I didn't catch the...
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I don't know if it froze or if no one's voted yet. Okay, there we go. Motion passes six to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh's absent, all the Commissioners voting yes.
We will reconvene as the Board of Commissioners. The minutes and claims, item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, and item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Madam Chair, whether or not it's necessary, I usually do a roll call when we reconvene. I'll just do, I'll just do one real quick before we vote.
Yep, sorry, I forgot the one.
No, you're fine. Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh's absent, Commissioner Friend, Commissioner Garcia, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, now we will do a machine vote on the item.
Thank you.
Motion passes six to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through N, please note that on consent agenda items H2 through 8, those will be laid over for one week. And items K through N will be laid over for one week. So with those two notes, is there a motion to approve consent? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion... Motion passes six to zero.
We did the recognition and proclamations, we'll move to citizen comments. Anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? And if you already spoke on the elections, we're not going to repeat during this cycle, so. Okay. Go ahead.
Ken Anderson, Douglas County, wanted to talk about recounts, two recounts that happened in counties east of Nebraska. One of them is Monmouth County in New Jersey, the other is Scott County in Iowa, both recounts. The machine counts were overturned by hand recounts. And ESNS were the machine brand that we're talking about here in those two counties. And ESNS didn't defend their machine counts. They acquiesced to the gold standard of hand counting. And the judge in Monmouth County, he's the one that ordered the hand counts to be done instead of the machine counts. He called it hand to eye counting. So I guess that's the new term here for manual recounts, it's hand to eye counts. And thank you for previously letting me speak, it was kind of an awkward situation there in the earlier thing, but thank you for airing on behalf of free speech there, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda?
Larry Stover, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I want to comment first of all about an incident that happened right here a few minutes ago. There's a deputy sheriff in the room that works for you, but he really works for the sheriff, who was an elected person. But the deputy that is here has to follow your orders while he's on duty in these chambers. So I don't blame him for his actions, because he's usually following your orders. But he stepped up to me just as I was stepping up to go to the podium to tell me that, "Sit down Larry, it's not about you" in regards to that resolution that I stood up about. Excuse me, did you tell him to do that? I don't think that's proper. And I don't think it's proper for you, Mary Ann, to tell this gentleman or me that I can't say anything more about the election. You guys don't get it, this is a republic. The Constitution of the United States is supreme and you are restricting the rights of freedom of speech and association. And you need to stop it. Also, within one of your items here in regards to the center. We keep creeping in here with words from Critical Race 30 about disparity and all this stuff. And throwing away money because the federal government said ARPA funds are available, but available for what? It appears to be anything and everything. But the World Herald came out and said themselves, and this document from your own agenda implies that the money is running out. So when we folks stop giving money out, it's not going to be there. But the people that are getting it are going to expect it again next year. And a lot of that, those dollars are going for physical plant and for community meetings, for fundraising meetings. Excuse me, my tax dollars should not be funding that. Those are, excuse me, but I consider that sort of socialistic. We are not a socialist democratic government, we are a republic.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the Board of Commissioners' agenda?
Luis Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I wanted to show you a video about, on the Green Street concept. If you can put it up on the screen here. This is over on 24th Avenue or by my neighborhood. And as you can see here, there's a treescape at the curb separating pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk from the street traffic. And that's great urban design. And the idea is that beyond safety, that people who bike and walk should have shade and pathway to move. And you could use more space than what they have here. They did a great job at using the limited space to put the treescape. And then also, here is a video of of the fireworks on Friday night at the riverfront. That was the last of them. I got lucky being able to be there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board about an item not on the agenda?
Dan S., Douglas County Clerk, just want to, I don't believe this board, the chair, vice chair, anybody infringes upon people's free speech. I think we let probably more people talk from the public than any other board in this county or city. So usually I just let things like that slide, but I feel like every meeting, we get that comment and I just completely disagree with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a presentation and the presentation of architectural study of proposed renovation at the Correctional Center for Mental Health Unit. And actually, I'm going to hold off for one second, let me do these public hearings real quick in case folks are sitting here. The first public hearing is for beer, wine, distilled spirits on sale for Live Good Omaha LLC DBA Symphony Point at 445 South 193rd Plaza in Elkhorn. Manager application is Katrina O'Droncic at 18626 Grand Ave in Elkhorn. This is the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this item.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
My name's Hannah Sutch, I'm with Bairdholm Law Firm across the street at 1700 Farnham Street. We represent Live Good Omaha LLC, which is doing business at Symphony Point here today in applying for this liquor license. It's a Class A, Class I liquor license, it's consistent with Chapter 55 of the Nebraska statutes and with this board's rules as well. My client, Katrina Andrajek, who will be the manager of this application is with me as well. And if I might, I'd like to have her come join me at the podium as well.
Sure, absolutely.
And so I'm here to answer the legal questions, I'm the attorney here, but she can speak really well to the operations and the business of the license application itself. So please fire away if you have any questions.
All right, I do not see any questions. Nope. Are there, or I'll close the public hearing and action can be taken today, what is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Friend, any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item B, addition to premise license for bottles and barrels LLC DBA Bottles and Barrels of 5331 South 200 and 4th Avenue, Suite 101, 68002. This is the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against this item, good morning.
Good morning, James J. Ellsworth, 4418 South 220th Street. I, my wife and I own bottles and barrels. When the building was designed, the original plan for the business folks was to have a drive-through area. They've amended our lease to include that area, so we're simply looking to, we also have a patio right in front of the store. We're simply looking to extend the patio premise to include that drive-through area as laid out in the amended lease.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments during this public hearing, those wishing to speak for or against? I will close the public hearing, what is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Last public hearing is a public hearing and resolution providing public approval for issuance of hospital authority number two of Douglas County, Nebraska, of lease obligations for the benefit of the Nebraska Medical Center, DBA Nebraska Medicine. This is brought to us, we had a public hearing, I think a few weeks ago on this. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Joel Vanderveen, QTAC Rocklaw Firm. This is a public hearing for an actual approval of a financing for federal tax purposes by the, financing by the hospital authority number two of Douglas County, which, to which you did hold a hearing two weeks ago and appoint the board members. This financing would be a lease financing of capital budget items for the Nebraska Medical Center, Donuts Nebraska Medicine. Matt Stratman with Nebraska Medicine is here as well to answer any questions. Be happy to answer any questions, I don't have any comments for or against for purposes of the public hearing, but would appreciate your consideration of the resolution itself.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against during this public hearing on item C? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, what is the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers, please vote.
Commissioners, while you're voting, I just want to publicly thank Joel and Don. Anytime these items come before the board, you make the clerk's office job very easy. You pretty much do everything for us and get it ready, so I always appreciate it.
Well, and you're easy to work with as well, so.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move back to the presentation of the architectural study for proposed renovation of our Correction Center for Mental Health Unit. Al and Mike, do you want to come forward?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a continuing study of the previous two studies that we've done.
Could you state your name, Al?
I'm sorry, Al Pavandra, Carlson West Pavandra Architects, 5060 Dodge.
Thank you.
We were asked to look at an in-depth study of another idea of, we've discussed several ideas during our study over the last year and a half. This is another look at, looking at spaces within the existing Douglas County Correctional Facility and to carve out some space for mental health corrections. And the study relied quite a bit on work with Mike and his staff. And I appreciate all the time they spent with me over the last several weeks. Let's see if I can get this right here. Is it Backspace? Okay, sorry, okay. So I'm going to make this brief, it's an executive summary, please feel free to interrupt me or ask questions at the end.
Yeah, we'll have you go through it all and then ask questions.
Yes. So this facility is a complex of three buildings that were built over time, the last 44 years. The oldest portion is, the portion highlighted in blue and orange there, which is the 1979 first section. And then there was another section built in 1989 and then in 2004, you did a major addition to the facility. Facility holds a capacity of about 1,420 inmates. And that assumes that all the dayrooms are full to capacity and all the classifications are exactly matching, which is almost impossible to do. So it is a connected complex. And we've done three workshops with Mike and his staff. The first one, we toured it with Mike and his executive staff through the facility and said, what would be the most logical and best place to do an addition for corrections? And what we came upon is the portion highlighted there, which is the first floor of the 1979 building. And a couple of reasons for doing that, and I'll get into that in a sec. The reason we picked that was, number one, when this facility was built, it's 1979, it was a fairly small facility, it's a couple hundred beds. They're small dayrooms. And our population for mental health is relatively small compared to the population of the larger complex. We were looking at getting about 76 mental health beds into this facility. So we chose that portion of it because there were fairly smaller dayrooms and again, we didn't want to get into the newer portion and try to convert big 64 unit dayrooms for the population that we have. The other, the other thing that was important was the proximity to the existing clinic. So we are locating these mental health in this renovated area next to the clinic for the treatment, particularly the minimum security mental health, who have a lot of addiction issues, et cetera, that need constant medical health across the corridor from the clinic. And then we also wanted to separate the mental health population from the rest of the population of the larger facility. So we tried to limit the mental health location outside of the normal circulation corridors that were happening there. And then the other, the other thing that we thought was an advantage, it's in close proximity for emergency response by staff. So those are all important issues of why we selected this portion of it. The other thing is, it's 44 years old, it's the oldest portion. So spending the money on a mental health addition and also modernizing the oldest portion seemed to make sense. So that was yet another issue with that. So where did we start? We started with saying, okay, well, what do we need? How much space do we need? And fortunately, we would define that in the studies that we had done for you previously, Study 1 and Study 2. Study 1 basically had a mental health-based program. So we distilled out of that only correctional mental health. And we came up with this program on the next two pages. And we can go back to that if you want to on any section, but that's what we had come up with through our programming. So where is this proposed concept happening? So in the shaded area, those are the six housing units, existing housing units that we are proposing to renovate. And then in the middle, so there's four housing units on the west side to the top. There's a section in the middle, which is existing outdoor recreation. And then there's two housing units on the east side of that recreation area. So what we decided to do was to take the top portion on the west side and turn those into the high-security mental health areas. So we converted those dayrooms into mental health and we'll show you the concept plan coming up. The problem is that the sizes of the cells and the sizes of the dayrooms are very small. They were built to standards way back when. They were meant for normal correctional inmates, not mental health. And mental health inmates require more room, they require treatment areas integrated into the dayrooms. And so we required some renovation. And so we, we required some renovation to do, to do that and get them up to the point where they would be mental health units. So on the next, next page, what we, what we talked about is exactly what we were doing to the existing facility, how we were changing the superstructure, how we were converting the rooms, talking about getting them into an appropriate physical state so we could handle the mental health component. And this page, you can turn your, turn your document over to the right side to see the, the layout that we had proposed. The blue, the blue area at the top, and I don't know if I can rotate this, let's just have it rotate. No, it doesn't. So the blue area at the top, which is the west side, we converted three existing units to a mince high-security mental health dayroom. And we expanded the depth of the dayroom by building into the outdoor recreation corridor. So the outdoor recreation hall, open space, we provided a corridor in there so we could expand those dayrooms. And the, the orange dayroom on the left is, is the female high security. So we have a female high security and a male high security there. And in doing so, we were able to, by expanding the dayrooms, we were able to integrate the treatment. So we have blue rooms, we have, we have specific control posts, and you can see there that the other items that we, we put in each dayroom to support in-house treatment of those, of those units. We subdivided the center, center area into two recreation areas for the dormitory areas, which are located on the, on the bottom colored area. So there's a salmon-colored area and then a light blue-gray area, which are the mental health dormitory dayrooms for, again, the genders of, of male and female, the smaller being the female. We still could not get everything that we needed in our, in our required program within, within this section of space. And I want to point out that we are, we are displacing about, when, when it's double bunked, about 216 inmates to, to provide. What we tried to get was 76 total mental health spaces. We ended up with about 65. And, and again, it was limitations of the area that we could do. We tried not to keep going into the existing facility because it's taking more and more inmates, inmates away. So we ended up providing on the left side, in that yellow area, the administration for, for mental health. And then we added two recreation areas between that new addition and then also on the, on the west side by the dark blue area for, for their recreation for the high-security mental health. I know this is complicated, just because we have a lot of elements and we're trying to mix and match and renovate spaces. So this is the concept plan that we, we had come, come up with. It, it did solve a lot of our goals, which was getting, again, a consolidated mental health complex in one portion of the jail, trying to isolate that from the rest of the jail circulation, and to provide as many amenities as we could within the spaces that we had. So the next sheet is cost and timeline. And so I know, I, I know that you renovated the Thomas Fitzgerald Home years ago, and it was a successful project, I think, and it, it was a fairly reasonable cost. One of the things that are, that's different about this project is, that was a vacant building. It had about two dozen ways to get in and out of it. It had no issues with demolition and noise and, and staging and interruption of services. So when we come up with this, what does this cost? You currently have a project ongoing in, in the facility right now. Mike had mentioned today it was a safety netting project. Right now, that, that project displaces about 128 inmates. So he had to absorb the fact that he's, he's losing 128 inmates while they're renovating that facility. This Sunday, my understanding is there was two dozen inmates sleeping in the gym because you just couldn't absorb that many inmates at, at this particular point in time. So that, that, when you look at the cost estimate, there's, there's the demolition superstructure, and if you go back to the previous section, we talked about how we were taking out the mezzanine area and demolition cell so we can create dormitory areas for the, for the minimum security, low-security mental health inmates. And then there was the new addition because we didn't quite have enough space. But then there's also a construction phasing allowance. We can't take 216 inmates and just dump them in, into wherever or ship them out. So that, that's why we feel that we're going to have to have at least two phases so we can minimize the effect of dumping all these inmates into your general population or sending them out somewhere else. The other thing that was important to understand, and you have this ongoing with your project, is work within a security perimeter. We go back to the Fitzgerald Home, there was no, no issues, there was no, nobody there. This is a fully occupied correctional facility. So when, when a contractor comes into the facility, he has, first of all, all of, all of his workers have to be vetted. They have to have a security clearance. And then as, as the workers who are vetted in, in the facility, they have to check in. If they bring a tool in, that has to be checked in. So, and you can, you think about material, bringing in drywall or saws or screwdrivers. All those things have to be maintained and supervised by his staff. So there is a, there is a burden, number one, for dividing the project into multiple phases. You can't do it all at once. And secondly, having this inefficient way of, of providing construction. It's, 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 every day it's, it's checked. There's, there, there is a protocol involved for, 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 if, if there are heavy, heavy tools or equipment to be brought in and left overnight, that has to be sequestered in, in areas where the inmates can't circulate around that. So it's, it's a big deal in time. So both of those issues created some burdens. If you add those two together, E and F, it's about 14% burden on the total construction cost. The project support expenses are pretty typical. We actually got our, our construction inflation down to 4% a year. The, the, actually, it's less than that because the construction period is about 30 months. And again, you know, you have, you have a deadline of December 31st, 2026 to, to spend this money totally. And so dividing the project up into phases is, is, again, not only costing money, but it's also taking, taking time away from the project. So the project total of just under 28 million is definitely still cheaper than the, the project of providing a, a, a new addition. It's about $5 to $6 million cheaper. Staffing costs on that project and this project, we talked about being kind of a wash. When you eliminate these six dayrooms and pull staff out of supervising these dayrooms, we don't need staff there because they don't have inmates to supervise her, but we do need staff to supervise the contractor for two and a half years. So two and a half years of noise and disruption and phasing and tools coming in and out and checks and balances with, with workers, all that has to happen over, over that period. So we talked about the new year, first year additional project cost of being pretty, pretty minimal. On the next sheet, we talked about the construction challenges and proposed timeline. And again, I'm, I'm not going to repeat what I just said, but basically, it's the same issues. We have, we have a renovation project that requires construction phasing to reduce the impact of dumping inmates into the facility, and we have to work within a secure perimeter. Those are, those are challenges that are affecting some of the, some of the timelines. And you'll notice on the timeline, we have interjected a second-phase construction. The next thing that's pretty important to understand, and I think most, most of you Commissioners are very, very well-educated about the jail and, and detention projects as far as what the capacity of a facility is when you, and what you can actually put in it. So Mike has to deal with both genders. He has to deal with maximum, medium, and, and minimum security. And then if you, if you look at this area under A, he has to deal with mental health challenges, communicable diseases, medical injuries, gang member separation. It's not just the blood in the crypts, it's neighborhood gangs. So he has to figure out, okay, who am I putting in this dayroom that won't conflict with this other person? I got to put him in another dayroom. So even though there are a lot of dayrooms in this facility, there are a lot of classifications. And so filling up every dayroom to capacity with the right classification and not interfering with some of these other things, communicable diseases, common, if you're tried in a, in a case and you've got, you know, you've got two people that are, that are conflicting in a case, that, that separation has to happen. He does a lot of research on intake as to, you know, where can I, where can I put these people within this facility? So classification type really limits the ability to fill up every dayroom. So we talked about imbalance occurs as daily increases or declines in each classification results in either overcrowding or under-usage with certain housing units. So even though you might walk in the facility and see a, see a certain dayroom that is 75% full, that doesn't mean that you can necessarily fill that up with the classifications that, that need to go there. The next sheet is, is a, and I think you see these, is a snapshot, a one-day snapshot. And, and there are the totals on that day, it was July 23rd. And one of the things to, to know, I think the most important thing about this document is, you have a lot of dayrooms, but you also have a lot of classifications. And your dayrooms aren't all the same size. You have certain dayrooms that are, you know, are down to 16, you have certain dayrooms that are 64. And again, to try to get the right mix of the certain classifications in, in the facility is, is a really challenging task. The next sheet then is an analysis that we've done over the last five, five and a half years of your jail population. And the highlighted area in yellow are, are areas where overcrowding has, has occurred severe enough that you're, you're, you're putting inmates, either sending them elsewhere, but most, most more likely is you're putting them outside their dayroom in a, in a gym gym floor. That happened this weekend. So we talked about 1,420 is your maximum capacity with all the dayrooms full, with all the classifications working out perfectly. Well, Mike, Mike and his staff are saying, you know, and actually, in the end, they wanted to lower that number, but we came up with a number of 1,250 as, as a population total, an average daily population total that is starting to cause stress within the facility because we can't balance out all, all the dayrooms that we have. So you'll see in, in 17, 18, and 19, the, the facility was pretty well-stressed. The COVID years, 2020 and 2021, started out being a little stressed, and then they, they have, they have rebalanced out to a lower number. So as we're, as we're looking at this, again, the important thing is that the total population that you have in, in the total capacity that you have is not necessarily related to the inmates that you have at, at that time. The next sheet looks at population projections. So your, your first facility opened up in 1979. So I have population, actual population from 1970 to now, and then population projections to 2050. The population projection from now to 2050 is supposedly an increase of about 13%. So if you just take proportionally your current total maximum capacity with everything perfect of 1,420, it's projecting out an inmate population of potentially up to 1,600 inmates by the year 20, 2050. Keep in mind that if you decide to do any project there, we're still nearly three years away from, from having occupancy happen. So we have three, nearly three years of inmates being displaced from the facility and, and, and Mike's staff having to deal with them, as well as the population in the county is increasing. So with all that, all that wordage and information, the, the conclusions that we have come up with is number, number A here, letter A, reduction in the existing facilities to the inmate population. So we're displacing 216 inmates and we're, we're getting, we're gaining 65 mental health inmates. So that net loss is 151 beds. So we're losing 151 permanent beds by doing this. We're relocating, as I mentioned, 216 inmates over time. And then the timeline is going to be challenging because we have to, we have, the, number one, the contractor's not very efficient coming in and out of an existing facility as opposed to a, 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 a new construction. And then there's phasing. We just can't dump 216 inmates on the facility. Right now, he's gotten about half that happening and it's, he's, he's already putting inmates where they, where they shouldn't be. We talked about the challenges affecting cost and timeline. And then the other thing that we haven't mentioned, or I haven't mentioned, is space program compromises. We wanted to get 76 bed of mental health inmates there, we ended up with 65. So we're, we're short there by a few beds. But the other, other thing is the spaces that we put these inmates in are not ideal. They're, they're, we couldn't get the sizes that we wanted by renovating, renovating the spaces that was deemed the best places to, to renovate. So just in conclusion here, on the next page, our recommendation is that is, the juice is probably not worth the squeeze for this. Can you do it? Yes. The $6 million, $5 or $6 million less that this renovation costs is nothing in comparison, number one, to the, to the hardship you're going to have over the next three years. But more importantly, you're going to permanently lose 151 beds. What happens with that? The cost to replace 151 beds is, is, is a pretty, is a pretty big number. And, and again, you're probably going to have to start looking five or 10 years ahead as to how the increase in Douglas County population is going to affect your total population and what you need to do about it. So that concludes my presentation here. I apologize it was so long-winded, and I think Mike, Mike and I are here to answer any questions that you may have about it. There's a lot of information there.
No, thank you. Did you want to add anything before I turn it over?
Yes, Commissioners. First of all, I want to thank Al and his team for doing a very.
Sorry, Mike, can you identify yourself real quick?
Absolutely. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Commissioners, we did take a real thorough look and explored the, the option of renovation. I do think there's some very significant risks associated with this choice. On that snapshot day of July 23rd, we also, that day, we had 135 inmates who we could not house with anyone else. So and all of our housing units are double bunked. So that was 135 inmates who were taking up, you know, they were, each one of them was taking up a cell that was designed for two people. 104 of those were on house alone status due to significant mental health issues. And another, I think, 31 were due to a recent inmate assault or something like, you know, where they, it was due to more of a safe, direct safety issue related to their recent aggressive behavior. So to drive home the, the point that Al made, the number, the capacity of the jail will never actually be the capacity of the jail because of how we have to separate people. You're never going to get all 31 housing units filled to just the right amount of beds to reach that. And as Al alluded to, we, we about 10 days ago or so had to choose to open up our gymnasium and put people on the boats on the floor. We're down 128 beds right now with the safety renovation project. We were forced to put people in the gym. On Sunday, we had 26 people sleeping on the gym floor. This, this is a temporary thing that we have always had to do from time to time. Doing this project in this way would basically make that a, I think, a permanent daily situation for us, where our gym floors would become housing units. for us, where our gym floors would become housing units. When you get to the winter months, then you don't have any place for people to have recreation and that creates a whole nother set of, of challenges and safety risks and tensions for the jail. So we did try to do a real balanced and thorough investigation of this. I, I do not think this is the right choice for the department going into the future.
Thank you. There are no lights on. I do appreciate, a second, Commissioner Morgan? No, go ahead.
So I'm maybe a little foolish. So you did this study, spent a lot of time on it, knowing that it would take away at least a net loss of beds available of 150. And I almost dislike saying it, that we'd be in the same position we are a little bit with our youth center, if I'm stating it correctly. And I stand to be corrected, but there's a lot of work done here to get the $1,000 a square foot renovation cost, et cetera. Am I kind of accurate?
Commissioner, you're, you're exactly right. I, I think this, this investigation in renovation here is, is, is just to, to try to confirm that the direction that you voted on going was, was the right direction. I think, I think it's, 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 it's an insurance that, yes, the direction that you did vote on is, is, is probably the, the best direction to go, given all, all the factors. So yes, I, I do, I do agree. We, we started this admittedly saying, you know, how is this going to work? Because we are going to be carving out space within the facility and we're going to be reducing the population. But I, I think we, you know, we wanted to look at, at exactly what the impact was. And we, and we, and I can tell you that we spent, we, we did spend the time and did it diligently. We tried to be as objective as we could about, about what we came up with.
So the next study, I would think, would be showing that you're going to build 27,000 feet or whatever it might be, 30,000 feet, somewhat adjacent to the facility. That would be the next plan? And I don't need a long answer, but just, well, wouldn't that be the next step?
Yes, I believe the board voted to do that.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I believe that you've, you've gone out and solicited requests for consultants to, to do that. And I think there's action in next week's agenda to act on that. So, so there is action to go forward with, with the project.
The other danger on this would be this proposal that we're looking at, building it there to the west. If you had an emergency in that mental health facility, it looks like your egress, ingress, and so on for rescue, emergency health rescue could be seriously challenged as far as, you know, that too.
You're, you're correct, Commissioner. That, that would be about as far as we could get from like, for a 911 call. That would be about as far away from the, the point of entry for emergency medical services.
Mike, how many beds do we currently have for mental health? And I'm sorry, I don't know.
No, that, that's just an interesting question because, you know, that we, I never, when this whole process, I have never asked for nor expect that we can build a facility to house every person who has a mental illness in a special place. This is for the most severely ill only.
Correct.
And that is that number, basically a couple of different classifications, a few when you consider cross, you know, when you, when you add gender into that. And that's where we got to that number around, you know, 76 to 78 beds for, to, to deal with the, the numbers of folks that are truly deeply challenging to us on a day in and day out basis. There is a whole nother slew of a few hundred other folks that are also diagnosed with a mental illness, but it's not as severe and they're more stable. And we can, we can, we do and will continue to manage those in our other existing spaces. But basically about half of the footprint of the 2004 edition of the jail is used for different levels of severity of mental illness.
30 seconds.
Okay. And I just want the Commissioners and of course yourselves to think about, it looks like we don't have a use right now for the bus depot. And if that makes more sense for us to look at that as one of the options, you know, I want, I always like to look at every option there is. So I'd encourage you to do that. Now, I'm just one boy, so the majority could vote no on doing that.
No other lights? Again, I appreciate the work that you did on this. I, for one, was never supportive of that because we're trying, I thought, to remove individuals from the jail for their, with mental illness. And even though it's still on the north side, it's away from and not inside, which makes me feel better. So I, I again appreciate the work that you did, but I think we stick to the original plan.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move to committees, the first being the budget report as presented. And then these next two items, Lori, are either one of these an emergency? Okay, then we will lay those over until next week as well.
Commissioner, if I may, the item number three
Oh, three, yes.
It could go today. It was, it was in, it was in the wrong place earlier.
Yep, I remember now.
It was under BOE and just got moved. So it was clearly on the agenda. So if you wanted to address three today, you certainly could do that.
Yep, sorry. That was correct. I even said that at the beginning. So is there a motion to approve item three? Any questions or comments on item three? You want item three? Are you going to speak on item three? What's that?
One we just have.
Commissioner, I think you wanted
All the presentation? Sorry, I didn't see you raise your hand yet you wanted to speak. So hang on a minute. No questions or comments? There is a motion and a second?
Motion passes six to zero.
Go ahead, Larry. I'm going to give you your time because you didn't stand up during the item.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said after they finished, but
Go ahead.
I'm opposed to the presentation and the theory of, of doing this. Until we finally resolve whether or not the center, at the center, 42nd Center, can be utilized since we already own the property. If we need a little more, you can move across to this, the old center plaza. There's lots of social services, things available in that building. And there's lots of housing to the east of there and just to the south of Leavenworth that can be used for mentally ill housing. It can also be used for homeless housing. And you can, then you can reuse some of the areas that are used for that downtown now because some of those people downtown and out by the airport are also mentally ill. So let's slow down a little bit here and try to utilize what we've already paid for downtown, down by 42nd Center. Let's keep them out of the jail center. Separate jails and corrections for mentally ill. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to child and youth services. There's one resolution rescinding the May 23rd, 2023 County Board Resolution that adopted measures that would gradually reduce the number of youth detained at the Douglas County Youth Center between August 1st, 2023 and January 1st, 2024. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you. Yeah, so this was going to be a part of the original motion two weeks ago that we discussed and approved, but through advice of legal counsel, the question was split. So this is just the missing piece from that discussion two weeks ago. The resolution today basically is an effort to get us in line with the transition plan and resolution that was passed two weeks ago. So that is why this one is before us as we all strive to really follow that strategy that was put in place two weeks ago and then, of course, work towards, you know, finding ways, mechanisms to improve the juvenile justice system overall and really get those numbers to, you know, organically go down to where we want them to be long-term. So just getting us in line with the timeline that was placed within the resolution two weeks ago. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Please vote. Oh, sorry, wait.
Louis C. Menace, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I support the resolution because it's split and you take, you took care of the previous resolutions two weeks ago and this one takes care of the, the May 23rd resolution. Last, two weeks ago, Madam Chair, during the discussion on the first resolution, you said that you could have the nonprofit service providers, the community service providers here. It's been two weeks since you made that statement. I, I challenge you to show that that's the case, that you can bring the service provider and they can have a presentation, let the public know, let the Commissioners know that they're present and able to provide these services. I think that's important, at least for, for your side. And also moving forward, that we, we understand what the network is, the, the youth network or the juvenile justice network is beyond a digital framework. Because when this discussion was happening prior to the detention center being built over here, somebody said that there was going to be physical, actual physical space for the services, the juvenile services. And it appears to me that that's not the case, that the nonprofit services, the, the community services, the alternative services to detention were, were going to be available over here. They're going to be available here in Douglas County. Where is that? You know, if you, if you were a private organization, you know, you probably wouldn't have to provide this information, but you are a public organization and you spent a lot of money, over $100 million on this, the totality of the project. So I think that's important, that these, this information is provided outside of committee. Somebody said that, that, that the network was explained in committee, but I think it's important and I challenge you to make a presentation that outlines the services that will guarantee successful, guarantee success and the, the alternative to detention. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I think I would just like to speak to my Commissioners Rogers and Borgeson just to say, if this is rescinded, what, what would the effect be? What is your opinion? Just so we really understand, get the background on what we're really, on what this means to the project as is.
I mean, it wouldn't be effective. It takes, it takes the measurable goals of a mark to hit, to try to get down out. That's about it. The heart of it was done last week with the six months. And now that the six months piece is in there, this really does nothing.
It's kind of irrelevant now.
No. But, you know, it is good just to have the, the marks on record, to have something to shoot for. Removing the resolution takes it off the record, but we still have a count for it to know what's there to go after.
Good. So then if we have the numbers defined, if, say in December, we're not meeting those marks, it would still, what, what would we do to try to meet those marks if we pass this resolution?
I think if, honestly, if it passed, we still have recorded the, it just doesn't officially have it on the record. We still have recorded the marks to make and that would probably be another discussion to come back for, for programming, but it, it really didn't have anything.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since I seconded Commissioner Garcia's motion, I figured we've, we're out on record on this over the last few months quite extensively, but so the record's fairly clear. I don't believe, because I want to reiterate, I don't believe that we have a lot of control and you've heard me say it, over what the state of Nebraska and the judges actually impose upon us. And because I believe that, I also believe we're on a path to functionally operating two facilities into the future and possibly indefinitely. So in short, I don't believe DCR, in my opinion, just my opinion, I don't believe DCYC will ever close, at least not in my, not that I can see with my crystal ball. That being the case, I think we must, I think it's prudent to plan for this type of scenario and removing this language is consistent with that thought process or my idea, my idea of providing capacity that the state and the judiciary require of us in Douglas County. So I, I think it's superfluous language that we have in there. I, I don't think it makes much difference and I think that this is a cleanup effort, if you will. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I'm just, again, I think it's almost like, okay, because it was this resolution, you didn't like it, but you're going to reword it. So it's your resolution basically saying and doing a lot of the similar things. And I don't agree that we're going to operate two facilities. As I said last week when we talked, or the week before when we talked about this, is that there was a staffing analysis done where we could be actually, by the end of the year, moving folks over that, into that new facility as we again continue to strive to reduce those numbers. So I'm not giving up on that. I think that, again, we can do a whole lot better in this community when it comes to rehabilitating our youth. And just locking them up again is not the answer. And so I, I really hope that we don't lose sight of that and we just, I hope we're not throwing in the towel and saying, well, we're going to keep too open, so that's just how it is. I hope we keep striving to make what we've started in terms of reform better for our kids and our families. With that, no other questions or comments?
Motion passes four to two. Commissioners Rogers and Borgeson voting no, all other Commissioners voting yes.
Rest of the committees, down to human resources, is just the weekly personnel report from civil services presented. No legislative items at this time. Executive session, we have nothing?
I'll take it. Thank you, Tracy York County Attorney's Office, legal advice, contract negotiation and litigation.
All right. Is there a motion to? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers.
Motion passes six to zero.
Motion to reconvene and adjourn by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Motion passes six to zero. We're adjourned at 12:30 PM.